I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session Special Meeting, held on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, commencing at 6:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Councilmember Salah Houdin online, Council Vice President Forsyth, and myself, Council President Kritzer. There are two items on the agenda tonight. Preliminary 2025 to 2026 biennial budget, council budget deliberations, and council talk time. So the first item on our agenda is ongoing council deliberations. Kelly Cochran, Finance Director, will introduce this item, and Councilmember Fields, the Presiding Officer of our Finance Administration and Communications Committee as a whole, will chair this portion of agenda. So I will pass this over to you, Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, Council President. As introduced, this is our continuing deliberations. We are sort of turning that mid-corner of the budget process, and likely tonight I will pull the council towards the end of this meeting and see where we think we are all at, and do we need to maybe consider an additional meeting, hopefully not of the ones that we have scheduled. But in order to meet that schedule, I will just now quickly turn this over to Director Cochran. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you for being here again. Appreciate it. We are going to kick off in just a minute. Why? We don't know. So this evening, we are scheduled for final review of the deliberation items. We have a hold for Thursday evening if the need arises for us to continue the conversation. We have, at this point, started to focus council adoption materials towards the 19th. So if we are able to achieve that timeline, that would be great. If not, we do have still on hold the evening of the 21st. I wanted to start off by letting council know of some of the changes that we are aware of in the budget. I also, once we are done with this, we will invite Chief Lowe up to provide an update to council on where we are in our negotiations with Sound Transit. I don't believe that any of these items on the screen should be of a surprise to council. There have been recent briefings from planning staff regarding the development or updating of scooter fees. The grant from HUD or Housing and Urban Development is being received by our fire department. This was originally noted as $1 million in your council packet. It's been corrected to reflect $500,000 because half of this is going to the city of Bellevue. Data Governance Plan, there is no budget change, but we initially had this item in the baseline budget because the plan was to get this underway in 2024 to start informing some of the decisions for 2025. We haven't been able to get the approval of that contractor or that work to council, and I want to move that to a service enhancement so that we can track that item as we are working on that deliverable for council and the community. These are the updated changes that we've made to the council baseline budget that we discussed earlier. The first project is the project for the city of Kirkland, our joint project, and we will work on the title of this project before we complete the adoption documents. The other two projects are updates that we provided when we did the revenue forecast in the end of September, but I just wanted to let council know those were not reflected in the preliminary budget, and we will update that between now and then. So these will change our numbers some. Just wanted to let you know and see if you have any questions or concerns. Okay, thank you. I will ask Chief Lowe to come up and provide us with an update on where we stand in our negotiations with Sound Transit for the coverage that we are providing for those stations.
So as far as the Sound Transit contract is concerned, the negotiations are completed. The contract is in their queue. As I understand it, due to some, I'll call it internal dynamics there, it has been delayed, but we're just waiting essentially for the approval of said contract.
Could you clarify, since we were discussing both the current and future biennium earlier this evening, could you clarify that this contract covers the two FTEs that we have presented in the preliminary budget for '25-'26? Is that the contract that you're referring to?
Yes, that would be the ongoing contract. It's one contract, so it would cover the services currently and/or previously provided, and then moving forward, it would cover those additional services. So as I understand it, yes, that would cover two of the FTEs as proposed in the current budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Kritzer?
So earlier tonight, Deputy Director Nara had mentioned that we didn't expect to get reimbursed for any of the pieces this year. Are you still in negotiation to see if we can get retroactively reimbursed?
Yes, like I said, as I understand it, because of their internal dynamics right now, that part of it is further delayed. But yes, the expectation is that we will be reimbursed for the services provided because those services provided were specific to the contract negotiation and the understanding that we had at the time of providing the services.
Okay. And then if we don't have the contract firmed up by the time where we go to pass the budget, which hopefully is pretty soon, I guess the only question I have is whether we might want to wait and do a budget adjustment on that versus budgeting for positions that we don't, we'd have the funding secured for yet.
So if you're asking my perspective on that, given the way the recruitment cycle and everything works, these positions would not be staffed immediately, so we would have sufficient time to get the contract through the process before those two positions would actually come up for hiring. And if for some reason we did not have the funding, we would hold off on those two positions. But I would ask that we not, I'll say, you know, not fund those positions. My commitment will be if we don't have the money, I'll hold, but I'd rather not have to then try and come back and justify getting those two additional positions down the road.
Okay. Thank you for seeking out the question in my statement. I appreciated that.
Councilmember Forsyth?
Thank you. I appreciate that workaround, and I'm in favor of it if we can get it in writing somehow.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other items? Thank you very much, Chief Lowe. So what we'll do is in the budget adoption documents, I will add a note that just says that hiring for the positions funded by Sound Transit will be on hold until the contract is signed. Are we good with that? Okay. Do we remember that? Okay. So moving forward to talk about the items that were up for deliberation, there was none that were proposed for healthy and sustainable. There is one that is proposed for safe and resilient, and that is in regards to funding for the bike and safety, or bike and traffic safety program. And what was requested is that we provide some funding in order to allow council to fill in gaps that they recognize as work is moving forward. So if there is a gap in some type of planning activity or strategy or study that we're doing, there is contingency there that council can utilize to ensure that that work is covered. And in the CIP, there was a request to make sure that we had the same type of flexibility for council as projects come through the queue, and council would like to see more in the scope in regards to bike safety. There would be some funding available for council to pull from. So that is the request. What we are recommending, based on the one-time funding that we have available, is to apply $50,000 to the general fund component, $250,000 to the transportation CIP where that can sit in contingency. Is there any questions, concerns? Councilmember Forsyth?
Thanks. Just curious about the number and why this, why $250,000 was the number. It doesn't feel like it gets us a lot, so wondering what those conversations looked like.
There was no conversation. It was the one item that I had some flexibility in. This was an amount that I had kind of queued up early on in our conversations, just based on what I knew was available, and it turned out to be sort of where we needed to be. So it really is based on the resources that I have available at this time. I do think that when we do the budget adjustment to recognize beginning fund balances, that is an opportunity for council to suggest, you know, additional funds be added to this. And I can certainly make sure we have that conversation before the budget adjustment comes through in probably the May-June timeframe.
Okay. Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of having that conversation, especially considering now we have, since the Senate bill passed, we have access to more funds, more impact fee funds that could go towards this kind of work. So just $250,000 is a great start, but I definitely want to see that number higher.
And I'm also hoping that this is a short-term gap, really just to get us through the next biennium, and that we will start seeing some of the strategic elements around this type of infrastructure be integrated into the projects.
Thanks.
Councilmember Kritzer?
Thank you very much for following up on this. And yeah, I just appreciate the response to this issue that we raised in the first discussion. I think this makes sense to me, especially having both operating and capital dollars, so that way we could have the staff time to be able to work on additional design or other pieces. I think this also gives us kind of the bucket that we've created to be able to add those enhancements to projects, especially as we see a project come through. If council has a question about whether we could make, you know, project by project, these projects a little bit more robust in terms of how safe the bike infrastructure is, or pedestrian infrastructure, depending on the project, that we kind of have this fund, and then we can figure out based on how much funding we have, what we put in there. And it basically creates two buckets of funding, both for staff and for the capital. So I think it's a good plan, and hopefully we'll be able to put this money to good use for a safer community.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Councilmember Forsyth. It seems a little bit anemic for what we have described, both in council meetings and during our items or our public testimony from people in our community, and even some of the documents that we put out to the public. Yes, we have heard you. You want a safer biking, walking community. So this seems a little pale to me. Going to your point about when we learn more about what our end balance is and potential discussions in the future, how can we strengthen the language in the budget to say that would in fact be a priority at that time?
Yes, I can add another note that says the intention is to revisit fund balance with council. I can put a note in our budget memo.
I think with that, I would be in support of this. Are we at that point where we're looking for a thumbs up?
Yeah.
So I think we have one, two, three, four. Oh, sorry, missed that. Councilmember Stewart?
So sorry, I had a question because I think actually that's a really unique opportunity, and we're only on like the first item of the night. So to assign priority, we have a lot of competing priorities in the city of Redmond, so I would struggle to assign the first thing in our agenda. There's a lot of competing priorities, so the what to do in case there is surplus in the fund, or a resulting balance that we can allocate because of the fund balance, I'm not comfortable saying it's the first one on the matrix tonight.
What I, here's in my mind how this works, is really in the council adoption documents, a bullet that says we will revisit the funding for this item when we know what the fund balance is. It is not a decision that it's the priority. It's I'm committing to checking in with council before we move forward with that adjustment to see if there is a need, desire, want at that time. So commitment to check in, not to do anything else.
Councilmember Kritzer?
I was just going to say that was how I interpreted what you said and why I put my thumb up, because I do think we need to prioritize, you know, with the whole view, so. But I appreciate knowing that we will come back on this one as one of the things we would look at if we have more funding.
Correct. So I will put in a bullet for Sound Transit, also put in a bullet for this item to make sure that there's clarity of what the intention is. Okay.
So I think we, I am not very good at watching the online council member. So I'm not sure where that person's at. Okay, I think we got it.
Okay. There are two deliberation items for the strategic and responsive priority. One is the level of staffing for our communications division. The other is the exemption threshold that we were discussing earlier for business licenses. This portion of the conversation regarding communication staff is just for overall communications. There's an additional conversation queued up in just a little bit for the World Cup communications need as well. So there was a request to make this position a full-time position for a limited duration time. The cost is approximately $150,000. Really what this person would be able to do is alleviate demands that are on other communications staff and really help us to move quite a bit of that work forward. Councilmember Kritzer?
I will just note, I don't have an issue with this and I'm supportive of it, that in the comments or questions matrix, there was an answer to the question that had come up about a related position of the council liaison or legislative council, legislative coordinator position, and whether that would be a full-time position with that confirmation that it would be as well, since that position right now is half volunteer and half legislative assistant. And so just wanted to flag that for the council, as well as that in that matrix, there was a description of the things that that position will do full-time. So just wanted to flag that since I saw these as kind of all connected.
Yeah, so there will be the coverage that is desired for council at the legislative assistant position, and then the capacity needed in communications to alleviate some of that.
And I think between that position, as well as this position, making this position a full-time, it'll give council also, from my understanding, is it'll give us a little bit more of the capacity and opportunity if we wanted to increase communications abilities from the council, like maybe add a council newsletter or some other pieces that we've talked about in the past, but we just haven't had the staff support for, that there would be a little bit more of that as part of this budget enhancement. So just wanted to flag that for everyone.
Questions, concerns, suggestions? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you, Director Cochran. Question, since one of the justifications is of course the increased need for the communications around World Cup, is there any notes or any indications for that justification that would cause it to then decrease after we're on the other side of World Cup?
I do think that this position will help to offset some of the demand for World Cup. I think I will turn it over to Melissa before I just make stuff up.
Okay, fabulous. And I may turn this over to Lisa Mahrez since she heads up communications. But what the plan was, was to have 50%, so there's two communications positions. One is 50% just communications, and that is to do an additional focus that we don't do now, so from three focused to four. And then the other 50% of that would be World Cup. That 50% would be limited duration for World Cup, but what we would hope is that we will see the efficacy of that position and perhaps in the '27-'28 biennium to make that full-time. So we'll use it as limited duration right now because we have the World Cup coming, but there is plenty of work in communications. So it would be our hope that revenues would, you know, increase enough for us to make that full-time.
And just a follow-up to that then is, are we making sure that there is language that allows for the broader scope and not limiting us just to World Cup?
Right now, we're limited that 50% to just World Cup because we're going to need it there. But, you know, that other 50% would do things kind of like is up on the screen, just, but we would be able to do, you know, more robust communications. And I know one council's priorities is community engagement, so it would just be what is that extra 50% we can use it for. Sure, we can come up with something.
And that's where I was coming from with it, knowing that that's the priority and wanting to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a situation where, okay, well, now that World Cup is over, so now that personnel is now gone. Just making sure that they're going to stick around.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to be clear, the position we're talking about on screen, is the other half of the position under vibrant and connected, or are they separate?
Well...
Yeah.
They were one.
And we asked for them.
Now they're two.
That's what I thought. Okay. Just clarifying.
One of them is here in communication staffing, and the other half is in World Cup.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's two separate people, full-time positions.
Two bodies.
Full-time?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm in favor of this. I think I was one of the people that asked for it. I would request that if we're expanding video e-news, that council members be invited to actually be part of that. And I love the idea of us having potentially our own social media account, newsletters from council. These are all goals that we've been wanting to do better outreach, so I'm excited to have a person here to support us in that work.
Anything additional? All right, you want to take a vote here? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, I think that this is the right level of resources for what we know. And we do have a communications infrastructure in place. We do work with organizations like One Redmond. They can amplify, help amplify the message. So it's not like we're alone. So I do think that this is the right resources. So how do we feel on this item and including in the budget? I see mostly thumbs, kind of a thumb. I think we're good.
Okay. All right. Moving along to business license exemption. So within our, well, the request was that we look at that section of our code and determine if there is an update warranted at this time. As Deputy Director Nara was mentioning earlier, our first time of implementing that threshold was in 2019, and it has not been updated since. And we knew that there is work going on with AWC that certainly warranted us taking a look at where we are. What we are recommending is that we move forward with a $4,000, or the increase to a $4,000 threshold, which is double what we have now, to make that effective January 1st of 2026 for a couple of reasons. The AWC process is going to recommend that implementation date. We also need a five-to-eight-month timeframe in order to get the state to implement the changes to our program. So they do the billing or the collection of our revenues for us. They would need time in order to get that completed. We have, as Councilmember Forsyth mentioned, there is a lot of that code that we are excited to look at and to update. Our plan is to work through an audit and ensure that we have an understanding of what our customer base is, or what the base of that makeup is, so that when we are looking at the impact that the implementation of new policies or practices will have, we'll understand that by, you know, having that data available. We're hoping to complete the audit within the next biennium, '25-'26, and start that work early if we can. Just depends on capacity. So if we can get that audit done, know what our tech space is, and can really look at where does our economic development plan want us, and what kind of adjustments do we need to meet to get there? And then there's the diversity element that we need to make sure that we also take care of, which includes this threshold and other types of programs that are available for low-income businesses. So that is our proposal to increase effective 2026, but there will be more to come from the planning and finance departments as we partner on this work. Questions? Councilmember Kritzer?
Two questions. One is in the deliberations matrix, under the business license audit, it says effort is currently scheduled for '27 to '28 biennium, but I don't know if that was a typo, so I just wanted to check in on, as you just had mentioned.
It is. It is a typo. Thank you.
Great.
We're doing the audit, '25-'26, looking for policy updates the following biennium. It's queued up there, but hoping to pull it sooner or fable. So thank you.
And I guess my only thing, I'm good with us especially aligning with AWC research and process, but I would be interested, before we actually take a vote on changing this, just what the projected fiscal impact is of going from 2,000 to 4,000.
So it will leave us with a gap of about $47,000. I do believe that the audit itself will identify that amount of funding. At this point, we would, you know, suggest that we utilize one-time funding if we are not able to make that up, but I believe that we will.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome. Councilmember Forsyth?
Thanks. So, sorry, I just want to recap. If I heard correctly, the policy conversation we're not thinking is going to happen until potentially '27-'28?
That is when the bigger exercise is queued up, that we really want to have that audit data in order to move forward, but there is work that we need to be doing before that to figure out what are we interested in. So there is, I think it's an iterative process, but I'd like to meet early in the year to know where we're trying to go with low income.
Okay, so you're just, you're being conservative in that guesstimation of when we'll start that work. Yeah, my vote is for starting it earlier if we can.
Yeah.
Hopefully we can.
Great, thank you.
Because that just seems really far away.
Yeah. My concern is, you know, putting something in place that has the wrong impact to a certain sector. Councilmember Fields?
Sorry, I missed it. Where are we doing?
Choked up.
Thumbs up?
Yes.
It was that falafel for dinner. So do, one question before we do that. The, so this, we're raising the threshold, and then it's contingent on something happening that, okay, it's not contingent.
No. This really won't have an impact to the city's financials. I expect that...
Sorry, I was thinking more in terms of when we're letting our business community know, we're not going to pull it back from them, correct? know, we're not going to pull it back from them, correct? We're not going to, we're, this, this is a final, they can plan on this.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thumbs yes? Oh, sorry.
Just to add on to that, when, in our conversations earlier, it's a, it's a gross $4,000 number or a net $4,000 number?
Gross.
Okay, yeah, so it's not going to impact too terribly many folks.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, here's the big one. You are all very interested in a vibrant and connected community. So we have several items queued up within this priority. We'll be discussing the other half of our communications staffing, some community-based events, innovation funding, affordable housing, human services, asphalt art, and a request from development services in regards to Senate Bill 5290. First one is the second half of the communications staffing. This increase to 1.0 would allow focus on World Cup and help to ensure that the ongoing work from the communications group is not disrupted by this effort. So any questions in regards to this recommendation? Councilmember Forsyth?
Thanks. And we also talked about this, the other, adding the part-time to make this full-time, being able to help with economic development outreach to small businesses as well. So just want to make sure that part is talked about.
Councilmember Kritzer.
Yeah, on this one, I think this did come up during our council deliberations as an idea to just expand, expand further on, on communications staffing. And I guess I would be interested to know from COO files if, if we feel like this is kind of the ROI on, on this one in terms of scaling up by an additional 50%.
So this, this person, this full-time person would be for an additional focus. So we do three a year now, we would up it to four. As Council Vice President Forsyth said, our World Cup focus is going to be on small business and how we can help them, sorry, just lost my train of thought, but focus on small business. And I think that, as I said, we will, I mean, if you focus on small business for World Cup, you're going to want to continue to focus on small business when it comes to communication. So we will use, if it becomes a full-time person, that's where we will use.
Thank you. My understanding when you answered the question on the other one was it was the other one that would do the additional focus. Is it this one would do the?
Yeah, this 50% was specifically for focus on this one. So there's two. So the other one had all the things listed that it would do, but this 50% was specifically to add additional focus for a year, for more than a year, sorry. Three that we do now, four, we would add another one each year.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I don't feel like I explained that very well.
But that was the 50%, not the, now we, now we're talking about adding another 50% on top of that?
No. So originally, the ask was for one communications person, and it was this one. So it was 50% to add a focus and then 50% for World Cup. Then we deliberated on it and added an additional 1.0, so it would be actually two communications people that you just saw in the previous priority.
Councilmember Stewart?
I share Councilmember Kritzer's concern for the situation we find ourselves in. And actually, my notes from our last deliberation had a few of the items that are in this matrix of nine, and then there are some that have been added since we were last at this table. So my, I guess my question is, it, it looks to me like this one was sponsored by the mayor's office. Is it because there's more funding available? And so is, if this matrix had another column, would this, would this say the sponsor of this additional item for deliberation is the mayor's office, and the mayor's office is asking for an extra half?
This item was identified by Councilmember Forsyth on the night that we were discussing the World Cup service enhancement. We have gone through our notes to track how we landed with the two. So there was strong recommendation that under, I'm going to move backwards a little bit, strong support for making this original communications person a 1.0. When we got to World Cup, then at the very end, Councilmember Forsyth had suggested that it may be worthwhile and wanted to put that on the deliberations matrix. So a recommendation from executive office is that capacity would be appreciated in order to serve the community for World Cup. The goal is to connect the small businesses with the events and really use this to help drum up business for them. So that is where we are.
Thank you, Director Cochran.
Welcome.
For the research, and I absolutely recognize Councilmember Forsyth's interest in, in supporting the small business community through this opportunity. I think that it, it has been difficult to track these, these positions and what's going on here, and we don't have the ledge assistant on here, as, as the council president mentioned earlier in the day, too. So I just want to acknowledge, I guess, for the council president, yes, it has been difficult to follow what's going on here. I don't have a question, I guess, at this point. When it comes to World Cup staffing, I just want to say for the public, if we do this additional here, because it's the right thing to do for the small business community and making sure we're making the most of the opportunity, on the whole, 50 cents of every dollar that the city will spend on the World Cup is about maintaining city services through this ginormous experience, and that's really important for the public to hear, too. So that's my hot, thank you.
Thank you. I want to just back up just a second, and then I'll call on you. So I just, I want to make sure that there's clarity, so I don't want anything to keep going unless we're really clear on where we are. In the baseline budget for the executive office, there is a legislative assistant, is a full-time position, and it is dedicated to supporting council activities. The, there is in the budget two limited-duration, one-time staff being proposed. One is to support ongoing communications, and one is to support communications for World Cup. Communications for World Cup include supporting small businesses, the communication to the rest of the community when there are impacts, where there's traffic, where there's, you know, high volume of people, all of, all of those things. So that's where we're at. Three people, legislative assistant, someone to help on ongoing support of communications, and then someone for World Cup, to help communications. That's as clear as I can be. Councilmember Kritzer?
Thank you. And to clarify, I understood that we were going from one position to two positions, or basically two half positions to two positions. I think my question was really because, actually to, to Councilwoman Stewart's point of, of the requests on this, that the first one was requested by the mayor's office saying, hey, we, we really, we've identified this. And I think the reason I asked COO files the question for the second one is because I do think, you know, every dollar that we spend, we do want to spend it thoughtfully. We could spend it on all kinds of different things. So even going, going $144,000 additional is, we could spend that elsewhere. So it's just more for us to make sure we're going to get the most out of it. I think to Councilwoman Nueva Camina's earlier question, maybe on this one, I'd love to see it be maybe World Cup and economic development communications staffing, just to be clear that if we're going to scale this by an extra into a whole person, or a whole FTE, either way, there'll be a whole person, then that we get kind of the, the long, throughout the biennium, the benefits of that.
Councilmember Forsyth?
Thank you. I think that's kind of, that hits on what I was trying to bring up with making sure that they would be a part of the economic development conversation, because there's so much opportunity here for them to work with our amazing economic development team and to work with like the LTAC committee, and then the Bellevue interlocal that we have for hotels. There's just a lot of opportunity here for strengthening who comes and stays here for the World Cup, how, making sure that they know about our city, making sure they know all the amazing things that they can do while they're here, where they can spend their money. So that was, that was my thought behind upping this to a full-time, so appreciate the clarity in the naming and excited to vote for this one.
Any additional questions, concerns? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I, I think when we, when we take a step back, we, we have in this conversation and earlier have acknowledged to ourselves that there are a lot of things that we, that already exist that we need to strengthen, our communication for opportunities with small businesses. We also have a unique event coming up, World Cup, and we are a growing city. So I, I think overall, I, I don't see a whole lot of skepticism about the level of resources that we're proposing. What we're trying to fine tune is where those people will put their attention and put their interests in what outcomes we're seeking. I'm not dismissing that that's not important as part of the budget process, but we, we need to be realistic. A lot of that will evolve as time goes on, and that's, we, we set policies, we set resources, the executive office takes those policies and the resources that we've provided, and as Councilmember Kritzer put, do, where do we get the best? I don't think she said bang for the buck, but something along those lines. So that's what I would say. And with that, thumbs yes?
The next item is a proposal to create a community-based innovation fund. The idea is to provide funding to allow our community-based organizations to bring forward some events and programs that would benefit the community. We are recommending that we set aside $25,000 to work through a pilot. Idea is to ensure that we understand the governance and the criteria, all of that early in the year before the program kicks off. Any questions, concerns, suggestions? Councilmember Kritzer?
Just a clarification, I think this slide says community-based innovation fund, specifically it's community-based events innovation fund. So the idea is to really seed new events and specifically to focus on creating events or maybe new aspects to existing events that are designed to serve the Redmond community without kind of that additional onus that we often put on events that want LTAC funding to create heads and beds. I see there's a question also on note in the chat from our online council member.
Are you saying Councilmember Salahuddin has a question?
Yes.
Councilmember Salahuddin?
It needs to be read, he can't go off mute right now?
Oh.
I can read it if you want.
Go ahead.
He says, with these potential nonprofit events in the pilot, are these events going to be advertised on our website and/or Experience Redmond's website if we're investing into them? That's often a concern from the community in that it's hard to discover what's going on. I can answer the question, and I think we, we can figure that out. I would love to see events that, that we invest in being on Experience Redmond's website and hopefully with all these great new communications positions, we can do more advertising of all these new events.
Yeah, if we miss that, we've got a problem, but thank you.
So thumbs?
Thumbs.
I think we're good?
Kritzer, Fonzie, okay. This is a big one, affordable housing program. So there is recognition that the portion of our housing program that is focused on housing assistance, and when I say housing assistance, I mean the type of funding that helps people stay in their current homes. And there is a suggestion that we strengthen our focus on that. I think that you, or I know that, you heard the same recognition from our Housing and Human Services Commission, that even within their human services allocation that they are working through, there is a lot of requests for housing, and some of that bleeds over into housing assistance, and then we do what we do on the capital side for infrastructure. So there's sort of three elements. There's the shelter, there is that keeping in homes, and then there's the infrastructure piece. And so what we, because this is, this is a big and it's a programmatic shift, and we want to make sure that we take the time to figure out what the gap is and really what the best solution is, and how do we pivot the whole program? And so the suggestion is that we work closely together in the first quarter to figure out what are those programmatic needs in the short term, and how are we going to meet them for the '25, '26 biennium? And what are they in the long term, and how are we going to pivot the program? And then conversations would begin from there in the development of that update. I am suggesting that we will be able to fund whatever investment we need from housing assistance, either from the program that has been funded in the CIP or from an answer to one of the questions in regards to savings for new positions that are budgeted. There will be some savings there of about 1.4 million. So there's an option of using what's already been allocated to the program or providing some additional funding. I believe the desire is for new funding to keep the commitment that we've made towards infrastructure pure, but I wanted to make sure that you have those options in front of you. The plan then is to work through an update of that plan before the end of the next biennium that can inform the next budget process. So recommendation is work quickly to understand short-term needs and cue something up for the biennium, understand what the long-term needs are, and work to, work towards programmatic and policy updates that are needed to implement. Questions? Councilmember Forsyth?
I just want to say thank you for getting this one in here. This was brought forward by myself, Councilmember Fields, and Councilmember Nueva Camina, recognizing that we need something for the stopgap to keep people housed. So just appreciate the creativity on this one. I'm definitely interested in the, the savings from FTEs that are budgeted and using that towards this program. And then as far as getting it stood up, I know there's work that needs to be done, but I'm hopeful that we can have these funds potentially ready to go as soon as possible in Q1, so that even as we're figuring out what that looks like, we, we have some of this work from the past, from the past couple of years where we worked with outside partners to distribute these funds. So I would just hope that we can look at what that was, set some of that aside, and have it available immediately while we still figure out what the, what the right path forward for the rest of the biennium is.
Agreed. Mayor Bernie is online, but I just want to let you know that she is excited about working through this as well and wants to work with council to get something scheduled for early, early in the year, whether that's a special meeting or some time dedicated at a study Councilmember Kritzer?
Just to be clear on this, so what's being proposed, because not, not everyone was a part of those, those meetings, is, just, yeah, so that we're clear here, the idea would be that we would fund... would be that we would fund, we would spend some time in the upcoming year figuring out how we want to holistically think about funding things like short-term rental assistance as well as other types of housing needs. And we would budget some money toward, to go towards that, that type of work, but we wouldn't allocate it until, so it'd be kind of adding to our housing fund. But we wouldn't be, we would still have the 5 million for capital expenditures?
Yeah. Well, if, it depends on what choice you take. If you want to utilize some of the 5 million, then the answer is no, you wouldn't have it. If you would like to utilize some additional funding that we have identified from looking at, you know, savings, I would suggest that we move this not to the capital program. We would probably move it to the Housing and Human Services Fund, but we would hold it in contingency until it had been decided how to use that in the short term.
Thank you. And, and can you explain what you mean by forecasted savings for your FTEs?
Yeah. There, Councilmember Fields had asked, you know, we have 41 positions that we are looking to hire, and our positions, as stated in the long-range financial strategy, are all budgeted at midpoint with full benefits. And we know that with 41 FTEs, we are likely not going to hire them in January. So I looked at likely timing of when we would be bringing in, bringing on the hiring. And so the general fund portion of that savings is 1.4. The most of the savings occurs in 2025. There's just a few positions that we will be bringing on in '26.
Okay. I guess my only question is whether we want to budget that entire amount or whether, because we might be able to use that money for other things that come up.
You can.
We want to do a million, since the idea here is something that also we won't spend right away, but we would be able to look at, figure out our plan and move forward with. Just be my, my thoughts on this, since I think we have, this is a new thing that's coming up kind of last minute for us to decide on. Great that we have additional funding. And also, we may need to go to our Human Services Commission since they did consider a variety of, of requests around both rental assistance as well as things like legal assistance. And, you know, as we do work hopefully around tenant protections and rental protections, we might look at some needs in this fund as well for that. But...
Yes, the amount is completely up to all of you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for helping to clarify the proposal. And just, I, I would share my thought that I would never want to weaken the tool that we have in our CIP currently on the regional boards and committees that I represent Redmond on. This is a tool I get a lot of questions and a lot of admiration for, like, wait, how did you guys do that? And because of the agility that it provides us in building more affordable housing, which is so critical to the, the overall solution. I guess now understanding the proposal, my, my primary question is, is a little bit about how we already do this. So we heard from our Human Services Commission, their recommendations, there's almost a million dollars in investments for homelessness and housing services. That includes eviction prevention, rental, move-in, mortgage assistance, and that's just one of our investments. As you go down the list, we also have another organization providing emergency rental assistance. We're investing 35,000 and others. So this sounds like it could be in, in addition, but why create two separate processes then is kind of where I'm at with the question, because we have, we have so much good work. We already do here in the city of Redmond.
Agreed. We're doing great work. I think that for ourselves as well, and anyone can interrupt me at any time, I'm just telling you what I think. The Human Services Commission even was acknowledging that it is difficult for them to know how much of that funding should go towards housing needs versus other services. So I think that there is some clarification around that bucket. And in that bucket, are there things that perhaps the city could be doing more strategically or coordinated? I think that, I guess, are we doing the most sophisticated or the, the best approach from that programmatic element, I think is the question. And we just, there's a sense that there is a gap from what we're hearing in the community.
And I think that that's, oh, sorry, if I may. And I think that that question is worth pursuing. Tying together all of our approaches and values here in the city, one of the things that I'm always really proud of is when we have folks closest to the communities most impacted doing the work. So this list of organizations we're already investing in, in the upcoming biennium are very culturally relevant, well-known organizations in our community that we are investing in to do this. So again, excited to explore additional ideas toward pursuing stability and recognizing that the Human Services Commission did a wonderful job.
And I would just add that I don't think we would do two processes, but as you know, the Human Services Commission runs out of money. So there were organizations that they funded but could not fund them fully. So may want to go back and look at what that full funding might look like, or fund or things like financial resiliency and housing that weren't funded at all. So it'd be, I would recommend that it be kind of the same process and look at what they looked at when they made the recommendations in the first place.
Councilmember Fields?
So I think what COO Files said is right, but, but, and then another but, with guidance from the council. I, I'm, I don't see, I don't see the distinction that seems to maybe be emerging here. When we're talking about stabilizing housing, as Councilmember Stewart just said, that has a direct impact to the extent that we can help stabilize people in their existing housing or in their, in the housing that they're able to, that we can help them supplement or continue to be housed, then that takes the pressure off of the future urgency for new affordable housing. And now, when I say something like that, the big, try not to be, I'm trying to be kind here, but the, there is the, the fans that we can solve this through affordable housing. That's true. We need that long-term commitment to creating affordable housing. But to, but to think that that's the only aspect of this solution is really a disservice to the people who are, who are potentially in stress now and who will become in stress in the near future, putting more pressure on the need for affordable housing. So I don't see the difference. I see them working together. I see these kinds of concepts working in tangent. And that's how, that's how it forms in my vision or in my recommendations. And I think that what this was initially proposed or brought up by me is that, do we want to take the rollover amount that we had in affordable housing and just continue to put it towards helping developers create affordable housing? Not to, not to diminish that importance of that, but there are other aspects to this. So then the mayor's office, through the question that I asked about the salary savings, came up with, with a pretty novel proposal and said, hey, you got another potentially 1.4 million you can use for this problem. If, if we don't direct this very specific to keeping people in their housing, then we are doing a disservice to ourselves and our community. So that is why I say this needs council guidance, this needs council urgency about this matter. And I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm just not happy with diminishing what's being proposed.
Councilmember Forsyth?
Thank you. So initially, when we talked about that 10 million dollars that we set aside, I don't even remember, four years ago, two years ago, for the, the money that's now being used towards our affordable housing building programming efforts, that was initially talked about as just affordable housing, and we didn't have a lot of clear direction around it. And I remember during that conversation that it was yes for building affordable housing, but also for keeping people housed. And I see this as the solution to maintaining the money that's still left toward building affordable housing and making sure that our future prospect is looking good, but also now this proposal as taking care of those that are struggling right now. And I'm really excited about the, the found money, I will call it, that you, Director Cochran, found for standing up this kind of program to make sure that those that are most vulnerable right now, however it gets done through the administration, I'd love to be part of that conversation. But I see this money as fulfilling an urgent need to keep people in their houses, to keep people in our community regardless of that AMI. You know, we, we, we have such a gap within our, you know, 50% AMI. Some of these programs that the Human Services money is going towards, people don't qualify for. So this, in my mind, would be a broader expansion to make sure that, you know, someone that hit a rough patch has somewhere to go and somewhere to turn to make sure that, that they can stay in their house. And one bad medical incident, one bad car accident doesn't put them on the street.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just, I don't want to be misunderstood. So I think no one, everyone at this table understands the three pillars of our solutions moving forward are around stability, supply, and subsidy. And I just, I don't think anyone has argued that at this table, that it's other than that. So of course, we need to produce intervention at all levels and at, at points we do. We do currently have programs that intervene at all levels. One of the other big assets we have in this work, and again, I'm not arguing against, this is a new proposal, and our, our ground rules for this budget cycle actually suggest that those should be brought up earlier in the process. So as we unpack this, thank you all for your patience, as we kind of unravel it and we are kind of thinking out loud because we're learning of it for the first time. But one of the other investments that came to mind as Council Vice President Forsyth was speaking was also the work of our homelessness outreach coordinator, who is doing a lot of stability and case management right now. And we make investments in their work, including all the tools that they need there to do their job successfully. So I want to make sure that we're making the investments that are going to deliver on our priorities. And also, if we go way back to the beginning of this budget process, I think on opening night I shared, I'm a little bit concerned because it's not just the nine items on this list tonight. It's actually making sure that we're making decisions today that deliver on what we need to do as a city and to not have our general fund go underwater in two years. That's our responsibility. And no one is suggesting an amount here today that would, would sink the general fund. Nobody is suggesting that. But what I am saying is a bit of concern for spinning up a new process where I already see existing processes. Perhaps a question I would have for the staff is around burden on, on them. Do we have the staffing resources currently to, to do this work? Would it go through our existing human services staff? Or how would that work? Would be one of the questions, just to make sure it fits in a work plan.
I think what I would, I think no matter what we do to that division, it's a, it's a burden. They're busy. It's a small staff. And I, I think that we have to be, you know, careful about what we ask of them and making sure that we support them in, in that. So I think that should be thought of when we are working towards a solution, whether that's in the short term or the, or the long term. I think what this recommendation does is really just queue up an issue, identify a big priority for quarter one of 2025 to make at least a decision for what does the next biennium look like. This is not, it wouldn't be an allocation of the funding. It would really reserve it until you could have that decision and feel like you, you know, hit that, that sweet spot for yourselves. So it's just kind of taking a big issue, giving you time and resources to work through short-term solutions while we're figuring out longer term. Councilmember Critzer?
I think if we wanted to allocate this money as kind of a housing stability fund, and that would be complementary to our existing basically housing capital fund, it makes some sense. I think one of the things we might want to do to queue up for council would be, we do have our regular retreat plan, but if we really want to think, because what I see in here is, on the last bullet point, is, is a vision to potentially take our housing action plan and put a funding plan to accompany it. And if we want to do that work, I think that's a cool idea to say, here's this great plan we came up with, and here's where we want to put the funding against these different action pieces. As Councilwoman Stewart mentioned, that's probably a lot of work on our staff. But it would be great to know, for example, from our homeless outreach coordinator, if, if we had this much funding, where would she recommend that, that we put it? Or from our, our human services staff, you know, where, where is this going to go the most, as well as our Human Services Commission? So I think we may even want to have some sort of mini retreat or, or schedule just a longer study session to be able to, to look at this holistically in the upcoming time.
Agreed. And I think that's the way the mayor and city leadership see it as well. It's a really deep dive. Okay, Councilmember Fields?
Do we all know what we're voting for? Or thumbs upping for? The answer is yes.
I don't know. Let's see. Maybe we should test them. I believe that we are thumbs upping to queue up a conversation early in the year to determine what the needs are for the biennium and allocate funding that for, in the meantime, we'll put in reserve in the Housing and Human Services Fund. And then to map out the process for updating plan.
Councilmember Anderson?
Sorry, question on this. So the, what I just heard you say was that we would be having a conversation next year to determine the needs for the funding that we might put aside now. I just wanted to make sure that's...
To determine the use.
The use, not the needs. But, okay, thank you.
And I think that's a great distinction. So thumbs up? How many did we count?
Thumbs four.
Okay.
Next item is human services funding. This is a request that came in from Councilmember Forsyth to help discuss or identify how to take care of some of the vital services that the Human Services Commission was not able to fund. So we worked with a dollar amount of $100,000. We learned through our planning director Carol Helen that the funding would first be utilized to provide complete funding to the organizations that had only been partially funded in the recommendation that were, was delivered to city council. If there is additional dollars available, the recommendation would be to put that towards the previous need, which is housing and keeping people in their current homes. We would put one-time service enhancement of $100,000 again in the Human Services Fund. Questions?
Councilmember Stewart?
Director Cochran, many of the items on the list of nine that we're discussing tonight are about spending more money. You've shared briefly a couple of updates from before, but this $100,000, why is it available now, I guess is maybe the question?
There is, or there was, or maybe there still is, unal... There is, or there was, or maybe there still is, unallocated general fund surplus, about $846,000 as of when we started deliberations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. I appreciate this one being brought forward as well and the recommendation from staff. Given the prior conversation, I'm interested to see what other programs could be supported instead of the work we're already going to do towards keeping people in their homes. I know we did hear from the Eastside Legal Assistance Program, something like that, ELAP, about how their, the funding that they normally receive from us got shifted, I will say. So I'd be interested to make sure those legal services, I'd like to see, I guess, putting it short, legal services get the bolster with this funding and then maintaining the keeping people housed and the other funding.
Councilmember Critzer.
I'd say before we just, if we wanted to help fill the gap that we had for our Human Services Commission, before we get too prescriptive, we should probably go back to the Human Services Commission, who spent almost a year reviewing every single application and coming up with the criteria to understand why they chose to not fund some things. I know there are some things that I was surprised weren't funded, but when I asked them questions, they had some good reasons for those. So I guess I would just say, I think, I'm not against us if we wanted to fill the gap, but I would want to go back to the Human Services Commission to get their recommendations. One that I would, I would say, and we could hopefully ask them to consider certain categories if they were lower prioritized, for example, like legal services. Although I also feel like that the previous conversation of the housing fund would be a great one to put towards legal assistance as something that keeps people housed rather than just housing, actual rental assistance. For me, I think one area that did seem underfunded or kind of lower on the priorities is, which I understand, it was around some of the mental health programming that was on the list. I think because they seemed like the Human Services Commission first, you know, did housing and food and some of those most basic needs, even though mental health is a critical basic need for so many people in our community and many are facing a mental health crisis. So I guess I'd put it, if we are going to allocate the money and then put a request to the Human Services Commission to review certain categories, I think this actually happened in a past biennium where they were able to allocate more to mental health and in particular, youth mental health.
I believe that this recommendation of going back to the organizations to provide full funding is from that recommendation, but I just want to verify with COO files.
Yes, that's what we would look at, is what human services did and then go back to them and say, you know, what are, what are the priority needs that you saw when you were looking over the applications?
Okay, Councilmember Fields.
So I think the question is, do we add $100,000 to our human services and let them do their work and figure out best place to use it? Is that fair? Question?
Councilmember Anderson.
If there's $849,000, why are we not putting more money in?
This was the request from council.
Got it, thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Thank you. I would be in favor of the $100,000 going to be at human services discretion.
Thank you.
And however, with the previous item that we just saw of the 1.4 million, then that be towards housing and then this not be. It's such a small percentage of that 1.4, and I understand that it's a different bucket of money, I understand that. However, in so many other areas, that $100,000 could make a much larger impact. So I would like to see that second bullet point, potentially able to fund programs that support housing by keeping people in their homes or getting them into homes, not be included in this recommendation because of the last item that we just took a look at.
Yes, thank you. Agreed. Councilmember Forsyth already spoke. Set's. All right, back to you, Councilmember Fields.
All right, thumbs.
Asphalt art is our next item. This is a recommendation or request from Councilmember Stewart. The, as you all recall, we installed the Rainbow Crosswalk downtown. It's been smashing success and there's a desire to see more of that around the city. We are currently in the planning process. So there is the cultural arts plan that is currently recommended in the preliminary budget. The recommendation is to work through that plan to understand where those should be placed, what is the timing of those installation compared to the other art activity, but put some dollars aside. We, in the construction of the downtown sidewalk, it was approximately $30,000. That did not include staff time. So I'm assuming a $50,000 cost per project to hold that in reserve in the art activity fund and offset those costs once we know where they would programmatically go.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. You covered most of my talking points. I guess I'll just add a thank you, council, for putting this on the deliberations. And then for the director's team, by the time I had checked back in with the team on this, they had already come and worked it all out together, and so lots of great staff support on this. And I really do look forward to seeing the completion of the cultural arts plan in 2025 so that if any of these new installations would like to be in place before we welcome a lot of visitors to our city, that makes a lot of sense, too. So thanks for everyone's collaboration on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Forsyth.
I'm really excited about this one. Appreciate the idea being brought forward. And I'm interested to know, I know the first one we did, the Rainbow Crosswalk, a large part of that expense was equipment. I know we have that equipment now. So you said it's about $30,000. Was that strictly for installation and development of that?
Just a moment. She's coming.
Director Burt is making comments in the chat, so.
So equipment for, equipment was only about $7,000. So that cost, while we do have it, the other piece that is the cost is the actual material that goes onto the asphalt, which is more expensive than maybe a more traditional. It looks like it's on.
It says it's a green, whoa, now it's really loud. Sorry, everybody. Okay, so what I was saying was that the original installation was about $7,000 of equipment. One of the higher parts of the cost is the material that actually goes onto the asphalt. It's more expensive than traditional paint, but lasts longer. One of the other items that we're trying to build a little bit of space in for is any graffiti or impact to the art, which is, there's some pretty significant gaps within the arts budget for maintenance of public art, which is something that we're going to be looking at in the next biennium with finance to have a better plan for moving forward. So this is building in some contingency for the repair and cleaning that is inevitably going to have to happen to these pieces of art. But also, as Director Burt said in the chat, it does not account for all staff time, and it did not account for all of the park staff time that went towards it either. We really only accounted for the artist that we paid for in that process. So just trying to build ourselves in enough to be successful.
I love that. Thank you.
Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Thank you. Question on the repair or maintenance of the asphalt art after it goes in? Have we, and I know that it's still early, but have, do we have numbers for what that looks like or kind of even from neighboring cities as some of the recently, recently installed installations have been experiencing some damage? Just so we can kind of quantify what that looks like right now.
I don't know that we've done research particularly on what other cities have impacted. I do know that when, the week we installed it, we did have damages to the crosswalk and public work sent out at least three staff for a few hours. And so it gets pretty expensive pretty quickly, and then it also brought the artists, the art staff down to ensure. So we can work to quantify that a little bit better, but it adds up really quickly when we have to deploy so many staff to clean it up. Oh, and then we have to like close down the road.
I would be very, very interested in knowing that so that we can have that for the public and have it on the record so that they understand what the implications are. Like, once we have this in place, that we've said as a community, this is important so that they can understand, like, and then this is the impact?
Yeah.
When we allow our fellow neighbors or visitors to destroy things.
Yeah, and I think that that's also something we can easily really loop into the cultural arts plan is addressing more of the ongoing maintenance and repairs when there's graffiti or damages.
And I absolutely love the increase of art because I think that that's something that just transcends cultures is art and food, so more of it, thank you.
Councilmember Forsyth.
Just to add that Director Burt added to the chat, which I think this is really helpful for context, assume rework every five years for installation. I think that's helpful context.
Thank you, Councilmember Critzer.
Just want to give a verbal plus one to this. Really appreciate Councilwoman Stewart bringing this up and all the support from fellow councilmembers on this because I think the more we can do to help support placemaking and an inclusive community at this time, I think is really meaningful. When we installed that, the first crosswalk, we heard a lot from community members about what it meant to them, and I think doing more would just kind of double down on sharing with them about our commitment to the community we're building.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
So I'm not against this, and I do appreciate Councilmember Critzer's comments about placemaking. But at the heart of this, it just seems like we're saying, let's add to the parks budget, let the arts and culture and the arts commission have this additional funding. And then we get prescriptive and we tell them what to do with it. And there were arguments on earlier issues, like council shouldn't, shouldn't be that prescriptive. We shouldn't, we shouldn't interfere with the work that people have been doing for two years and we should let them decide. So I guess the question is, how is this different?
I believe in partnerships, Mr. Fields.
Pardon?
I believe in partnerships, and I think that there is a desire that council is bringing forward, and I think staff want to bring that forward for the community as well. And although we don't have the answer or the ability to meet that need right now, the desire is there, the commitment is there, and we just want to make it visible.
But in the work that you all did, this didn't come up until it came up through council deliberations.
Actually, it has. Asphalt art is something that our staff has been looking at really closely and is one of the things that we really wanted to build into our cultural arts plan. So the cultural arts plan has not been updated in quite some time. Asphalt art was not quite as prevalent when we did that last plan, and so it's really important that we are updating these plans on a regular basis. We also just don't currently have a really prescriptive process for this particular program, but that is the goal. So no, it did not come up organically in this budget process. It would have been something that for us, I would say this is actually really similar to like the dog parks conversation. It's just coming up a biennium earlier because of the conversations with council, but this is absolutely an effort that staff have been looking at, looking at grants, looking at opportunities to expand in what our partnering cities are doing. So, and like Director Cochran said, we really do, where we can find mutual wins and really serve the community in ways that we all identify with, we want to. So didn't come up organically at this moment, but would have in the next budget cycle.
Councilmember Critzer.
I'd also just note, I think, similar to many of the items on this list, this is a suggestion for funding something that is on the roadmap for our city and would likely go through or be involved with a commission in developing it the same way that our first one was. So similarly, as the Human Services Commission do their work, and I, just to clarify, since I think it was directed at my comments, that previous comment, that what I was saying is that the Human Services Commission in particular, they spent the time looking at applications determining whether public dollars were the right fit for, based on criteria for a particular program and project. And as they said when they came to talk to us, they said, even if we could fund all this, we wouldn't because some of it is not the right fit for the criteria of this grant program, which is, I think, which is the only reason I was saying we should go back to them because they spent the time thinking about that stuff. Whereas this, we would go to our commission, we'd have them hopefully, hopefully pick out the artist or work with the community, design that whole plan. And the point, I think, of our commissions in general, whether it's arts and culture, our parks and recreation, our human services, is that, is that they're made up of our residents, they hear from our residents, and they are as close to our community as we can get to help to process these things. So just in advance, thanks to them for that work.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Thumbs. You got it?
All right. Okay, the last one. Budget, not budget item. So there is a Senate Bill 5290 that will require the city to issue permit fee refunds if we are not meeting our performance metrics. There are different options that the city can choose to help buffer us or insulate us from that risk. From the list that is available, the city is recommending that we implement measures B, D, and E. So item number one is measure B, and that is imposing reasonable fees, which we do through our studies, through the updates in our CPI annually. So we meet that criteria. Number two, measure D, is also a criteria that we qualify for. We have on-call contracts that we keep current and provide access to development services staff for that if we don't have capacity within our own. So we are, we are good with numbers one and two. Number three reads that basically our staffing authorization will recognize positions that are needed if development revenues pick up at a pace more than we expected, meaning you can tell that activity is higher than we anticipated and we've got a lot of pressure. Or the other way would be if there's just a lot of pressure and maybe the revenue isn't coming in yet, but we can see it. So there would need to be a trend to indicate that we would have resources available to offset the cost of these positions if we were to hire them. So the funding, the staffing authorization is really just, it would be an identification of the positions and the quantity, which I believe that Development Services is looking for four FTEs. Recognition of the titles and the positions that are available, but it is completely contingent on financial performance and council's authorization because it would require a budget adjustment. These positions would not be funded. So in order for them to be funded, we would need to go through the council process, which would authorize that budget adjustment. So it allows us to insulate ourselves and have one step of the process already taken care of, which is identifying the positions and the quantity. The next part of the process is, if they're needed, bringing the financial information forward to council and request authorization.
Um.
Thank you. Okay, so, huh. Here we are. Thank you. We have some follow-up work. There is fiscal policy information that I owe to you. I am not aware of a need to meet on Thursday night, but I will hand this over to Mr. Fields.
Councilmember Critzer.
Thank you. I wasn't sure when was the right time to bring this up, but there was an item that I had asked to be on the matrix that did not appear on either matrix.
That was great.
Okay, great. So I had brought up during, I believe, the first night, the request to find out what we believe that our DEI advisor position is, has the appropriate budget for us to be able to hire at the level that we need to, to effectively administer that position and that program. And I believe CO files was going to come back on that. I didn't see any responses on that, and there was some discussion just around that position. So did want to follow up on that.
What I would like to recommend, I apologize, I'm not sure what happened to the question. What I'd like to suggest is, again, we can put a note in the budget documents that basically will require a request that we have a check-in with you before we move forward with hiring for that position, which I believe is the plan at this point. I know that CO files intends to work with Anita to determine the direction and keep council in the loop, but I will let her speak for herself.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Director Cochran. What I would like to do is, I've been working with Anita on suggestions for what would be a foundational equity office and how that would be staffed. I still need to do some work with her, and I probably will come back to you with a contract for her to look at kind of baseline equity office, what we'll need to implement the strategic plan for ready, what kind of positions we'll need. I don't think we'll need more, but again, to your comment, what should those positions be to make the office successful? So if you are willing to wait just a little while while we kind of do that work, I can come back to you with a recommendation.
I appreciate that, and if we could somehow just have that in writing in relation to this budget package, I think being clear that we are going to commit to building that office with the resources necessary to succeed with the advice of the person who's helping us build our ready plan, I think that is, that's great. So appreciate that. Thank you.
If funding is needed in order to fill a gap, we'll address it at that point by pulling that from salary and benefit contingency if needed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that was going to be my question. It's not a high-risk gap, I wouldn't think.
No.
So speaking of gap, Councilmember Stewart's brought up risk a couple of times. Given everything that you know, Director, how would you rate our budget from a risk perspective?
I feel as though, well, there's always risk. There could be a global pandemic, I don't know. So looking at what we have queued up, a lot of the risks that we are assuming are in our one-time asks, whether it is seeking legislative support or queuing up positions to help us seek grants and ultimately becoming a cost recovery type of a program. It's hard to say exactly what is going to happen, and there are some very positives as well. But I don't see any immediate risk or need to change direction. I think, as always, we've been really careful and have teed up the one-time things even for an extended period of time. So we don't have to back off if things seem a little tentative in the beginning.
Appreciate that. So one of the things, and you sort of helped me segue into it, and I'm not recommending any changes to our budget, but we did just have a watershed moment last Tuesday that may change the nature of what the federal government will provide block grants for, many kinds of funding support. The first thing that comes to mind, just from a public discussion perspective, is sustainability and climate change and carbon emissions. Thinking through that and doing some research, but even this upcoming administration discusses the quality of water. So that gives us avenues, but I do think it's important, my first thought was that the federal grant advocacy person really needs to be thought through, that the very astute person and able to work with all kinds of different political perspectives. So I think you brought up that risk. I'm sort of doubling down on that risk, and I think that we should, there's nothing to change, but I do think we need to be aware.
Agreed.
Councilmember Critzer.
This is my last question, I promise. Well, maybe, but I think I do. So given what you said about that 800,000, and you assuring us that we're not at risk here, I guess I have to ask the question of one thing that was remaining on my mind after we did all the work with our public safety funding committees. And at that time, we decided to allocate to FT, to, with one-time funding for two social worker alternative response FTEs, $316,000. And I'm just wondering, if we have extra funding, should we scale that program up a bit more, go three or four FTEs instead? I think right now we have it planned, 600,000 for the 27, 28 biennium versus the 300,000. If we have that extra one-time funding, I guess that's where I would put it if we want to allocate it, since others brought up ways to allocate that funding tonight. So wanted to bring that up, and I know that's a last-minute ad, but just going to put that out there.
So the recommendations that we reviewed utilize the funding that was available. Another idea is we can allocate that to, in another direction.
Oh, that used all the 800,000?
You spent it.
Oh, got it.
You blew it.
Okay. I thought you were saying there was still remaining.
No.
Okay, never mind. Take it off the table.
Any Councilmember in the way, but Camina.
Just a comment, Director Cochran, to show my appreciation for the work that you've done in the time leading up to now to get us into this position to where we're having a very different conversation than years prior. When the question of risk comes up, and there is always risk because we don't know how life is going to life at us, but being deeply appreciative that you've built in reserves and you've also been looking at what's the plan to even increase those reserves. So on that, I just want to show my appreciation to you and your staff for getting us into this position to begin with.
Thank you.
Great. Any Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. I feel the conversation on the DEI advisors incomplete, so I just want to go back, and it's similar to the asphalt art in that it's like, when I began reading the preliminary budget, it was, what were the incomplete things from this current biennium? What are the things that caught us off guard? And I think this is our second go at really the intent of having a strong director at the table with the other directors, helping to guide our city. So that's the intent here, as well as the additional position that's already in the preliminary budget and is being brought forward essentially from the last biennium. So really happy to see that office. And CO files, if you need to put that contract on my December 3 to PW Committee of the Whole Meeting, we would welcome you if you have a contract by then because I know it's coming down to the end of the year. Thanks.
And I think the mayor had a comment.
It was, I think the time has passed. I was just going to agree with Councilmember Fields about the federal lobbyist, and more to come on that because I think we're going to have to, hopefully, we don't have to make any budget adjustments to support some community members if that kind of human services funding goes away. But I do think we have to keep that on the horizon, that we might have to adjust some of our expectations in regards to federal funding for different programs.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, and I apologize for not attending the last two meetings. I've had some issues at my other job, and I regret being not able to participate. However, I do have some comments to add, and Mr. Fields had actually opened most of the meetings, so I prepared these earlier.
I was going to close the meeting with this.
With that, okay. Well, if it's okay, I'll get started with that. Thank you. So I wanted to mention first, very grateful for the work on the budget from the staff. It seems like it's pretty streamlined process this year, which is great. Congratulations, of course. It's nice to not have to give away a Thursday night as well. And I liked seeing the first meeting on the 22nd. I'm super excited to hear about the Human Services Commission did an outstanding job, a lot of work on housing and some great nonprofits works. I sent in a couple of questions. I'm happy for an email follow-up on that from Director Burt and Ms. Cochran and Director Helen. More, I think some of those questions were covered actually earlier today, so I appreciate that. And then I really liked seeing the in-house legal transition. That sounds like a great idea, and specifically for separation of duties and coverage of things like routine internal reviews and the ability to call, kind of empowers council also to call for independent investigations with an outside counsel. I'm not, that didn't come up in the conversation, but I think that's very important from a separation of duties issue. Then I also saw that is one, could be one step toward that Ombuds Office that we discussed a couple of months ago at council meeting, and I thought that was a clever way to address that. I do share the concern about the DEI program's stability in general, but it looks like we are committed to working forward on that, and I'm looking forward to working with Ms. Files on that as well. Thank you. I was very excited to see some cybersecurity investments, and I think that was all of my overall comments. So thank you, and great job.
Good comments, thank you. Councilmember Forsythe.
A lot has been said that I don't need to repeat, but it does need to be repeated to say thank you to you and your entire staff. This has been the easiest budget process since I have been here, and I am really excited that it sounds as though we are ready to wrap and move forward with this on the 19th. Just honestly, from the bottom of my heart, like, this process was so smooth. You made everything understandable, you made us laugh, you made us understand the complexity of the work that you do, and just really grateful for all of the ads that we were able to do, the new staff that we're going to be bringing on, grateful that we did the austerity work in years past to make sure that we are in a place now where we can be bringing new ideas and new perspectives and new staff members onto our city. So we're in a much better place than a lot of cities around the region right now, and that is all thanks due to your work. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Stewart.
I have a question about how we would like to handle the remaining matrix items.
From the questions matrix, and is there, which, let me bring that up for you. Can you bring up?
It just felt like we were wrapping up, but actually, we have a whole matrix with some open questions, and some councilmembers have not had all their items closed. So was that part of the process tonight, or was that happening in some other way?
We can take a look. Thank you for the reminder.
Might I make a suggestion that if councilmembers have, and some of these say open, but I think people might have read them and have them closed just for the sake of time, we could have councilmembers just raise their hand if they want to raise a particular one that they believe is still open after reading the answer.
Okay.
I'm good to close my legal review item.
Thank you. Okay, so the first one, that is, it's okay. Scroll down for me. Okay. So the first one that is open, Councilmember Stewart, is related to the battalion chief replacement.
Sure, that is one that I wonder if we could have further conversation on, but I think the suggestion was folks can raise their hand if they want to review them, otherwise we'll consider them red.
Thank you.
Yeah, but yeah, I would love to dig into that one. I forwarded to the council and the mayor earlier today the additional information that I'd received from Chief Shepherd, but there was some unclarity, and I wonder, could we chat about that? Thank you, Chief Shepherd, sorry to put you on the spot. While we get Chief Shepherd, I'll just queue up the question. You know, in the last biennium, we funded, the current biennium, we funded the fleet study. That included a review of all of the fleet that Public Works manages, as well as what we have in fire. We have some proposed vehicle replacements from fire. This includes some aid cars and the battalion chief vehicle. And there were recommendations for how to refuel these vehicles. And so I'd just love to hear a little bit more about what is planned for both the aid cars and the battalion chief's vehicle in order to fulfill kind of the direction that the fleet study recommended.
Absolutely, and thank you for your question. So I think the fleet study was incomplete, it was a draft, but looking at some of the recommendations that they had, and they stated in there that the fire department is actually the leader in this space right now in the city, one of the things that, the questions that came up last time we spoke was, first, how are we purchasing our aid cars, whether it's a purchase or a lease? And we're certainly going with the lease, and we don't have the technology yet to actually go with an all-electric ambulance, unfortunately. Second part of, well, was there another part to your question? I'm sorry, let me make more than certain I'm answering your question.
The fleet study recommended idle mitigation for these vehicles. Is that something you're able to achieve?
Yeah.
Purchases?
So yeah, we looked into that technology. We do have an opportunity to go back. We had already made some purchases on aid cars, so we did have a spec for that vehicle. However, technology has come along for idle mitigation. Currently, what we do is we actually turn our vehicles off when we do arrive on scene as an intermediate step. But yes, we'll look at those technologies to make sure that they are implemented and making sure that we are environmentally safe.
Great, thank you. And then the battalion chief vehicle, could you tell us what that is and what you are hoping to replace it with?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for that question as well. So the battalion chief vehicle's a mobile command vehicle for a single individual, can ride up to two people in there. Going back to my previous statement, we're not able to lean into the technologies as far as EVs at this point. We'd love to, and we've looked at it. We've even looked at extended-range batteries and the capabilities, but the fact that these vehicles are out in the system for an extended period of time and the need for them to be ready to go, and they're a one-vehicle for an entire city and a fire district, we don't have the ability to actually go with a non-fuel-generated vehicle. So we will be looking at getting a, we're specing it right now, but probably something around maybe a Ford F-150, F-250, and it will be a gasoline-powered vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, is that a closed item then?
Any other items on the matrix to discuss? Councilmember Noa, Noa Vakamina.
Thank you, Chief. Real quick, before you get too far, my question was just very, very simple, and that was whether or not we're exploring conversation around leasing and purchasing and what's going to be in our best interest. And I had a question about, is it possible to lead, to lease aid cars and looking at pros and cons of both purchasing and leasing, and if that was an option?
Absolutely, and I like the way you frame that. What's in our best interest? And we've had discussions, we've been working And we've had discussions. We've been working with finance, and we've looked at a couple of different models, and we do think that leasing is a better option for us. We don't have those increased costs, one-time costs inside our budget, so that's a big spike for us when we have to make that purchase. And so, we've looked at our vendors. Our vendors actually do provide that option for leasing, and so, we're going to explore that even further. We want to go that route.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Because I sent in two other questions, I'm going to read them, and then I was wondering if you could add them to the matrix, and I'm assuming there'll be another version of it provided with the packet.
I think I can actually answer your question, so go ahead.
Okay, great. So, the first question was, in the first meeting on the 22nd, Ms. Cochran mentioned the overall budget is lower than the last biennium because the senior center is now no longer in it, and this makes sense. However, I'm concerned that we're missing an opportunity to set aside reserves or carve out room for the MOC. I did hear a conversation about reserves the next week, but I'm curious here in what the thought is in reducing the overall capital budget as a result, instead of advanced planning or set asides for the new project.
So, we do have reserves in the capital budget for the MOC. The reason that the budget is lower for '25, '26 than it was for '23, '24 is because the construction of the MOC is outside that two-year window. So, we have reserves set aside, and we're building, we are in fact doing, doing exactly as you suggest. So, each of the funds has reserves. Within the utilities, it's fund balance. For the general government piece, we're holding REIT as well as some general fund. So, we're building reserves as we can for that project specifically, as well as reserves within the programs for regular replacements.
And is that easy to see somewhere, so we could understand as a councilmember how much we currently have set aside at any given time?
Next budget, yes. So, we are in the process of identifying this, the difference between fund balance and reserves, and we can work on our documentation of that in the next budget cycle to actually create a capital reserves budget offer, just like we do operating reserves.
Fantastic. I love that idea. And then my next question was on the Human Services Commission funding. Again, staff and commission did an outstanding job, Alaric and Brooke Buckingham also. Thank you for the presentation. The formula, just was a comment, was not presented in sort of the comparative way to see what we, what we had versus what's used now, and I was just asking if there could be a visual for that to be shared, so we understand where the adjustment was, was added, and then it was just difficult to locate, so that was the only thing. And then the comment I had to clarify, which may be a lookup, is about the pursuit and engagement of diversity-focused organizations, which I really appreciated, understanding about that, and I just wanted to know if there was a specific way we could understand how many of the nonprofits funded are BIPOC-led and/or, and also focused on BIPOC issues.
The BIPOC issue, I will follow up with you in email. Director Helen has said, sent me the information. I just have not had a chance to read through it and get that to you. The formula, Deputy Director Nara will, we will send, will post a picture of how we came to the results that we did. But essentially, we went back to the last time that we had trued up that calculation for true CPI adjustments versus what we had anticipated. So, there was sort of a catch-up or a true-up in the beginning, and then CPI applied as typical, which led us to very close to what the Human Services Commission was requesting.
Fantastic, and that's helpful, and just my request is to have that put on the matrix for everybody. Thank you.
Done. Thank you.
Councilmember Kritzler.
Thank you. I want to loop back to an earlier question I asked and ask it in a slightly different way, which is actually to those who were supportive of the idea and for us to allocate the $1.4 million to the Housing Stability Fund. I'm wondering, coming back to the idea of the social workers, if we allocated $1.1 million to that social, to the Housing Stability Fund and use $300,000 to augment the social worker alternative crisis response, we could double the number of alternative crisis response workers that were allocating this biennium. And it seems like it's kind of a, both would live within housing and human services and kind of respond to a variety of different needs that we have within our community. So, just was kind of doing the math on this, knowing that we had this money, which we all did just kind of learn about tonight, that this, this additional funding was out there, and I'm open if either of the chiefs or Director Helen wants to weigh in on whether it would not be helpful to have two more social workers. But my understanding was that our committees were constrained based on understanding of the resources, and so I just want to loop back on this to make sure that we're allocating enough resources there. In case, in case that's compelling to those who I know care a lot about housing, as I do, and I also would love to see us develop that Housing Stability Fund, but perhaps we could, we could split a little bit of this extra money difference to be able to augment that program as well.
My recommendation would be that we get the program established, because these two additional social workers would not be the first hires, as we discussed in the subcommittee. The MHP would be the priority hire to help create the framework and structure of the program, and then the additional staff would be added afterwards. So, if those fund balances remain available, say, at the mid-year point, I think that would be a better time to make that consideration for the additional staffing.
Is that something that we can, that kind of discussion include in the first quarter as, as we are planning to do on this 1.4 million? I guess the question is to you, Council President.
Of course, yes. We, we can bring that up if the council's interested.
Councilmember Forsyth.
Yeah, I'm, I'm absolutely fine with that suggestion as part of our growing conversation around this bucket of money. I think that's an elegant solution to doing the thing, all the things that we want to do. I would have been happy with a million dollars towards this Housing Stability Fund, so I'm not, not supposed to say that part out loud, but yeah, I think that's, that's a great way to supplement the work we're already trying to do.
Thank you. Anything to add on that topic? Thanks, Chief Lo. I think Councilmember Stewart had a question. I can't remember. Councilmember Kritzler, again.
Okay. I will, I appreciate the information from the chief, and I guess I'm just, I'm just concerned that I do want to make sure, if we happen to have extra funding, that we have enough funding if, as we build that program to be able to have the sufficient resources to build that out to what we want it to be. So, if there's going to be flexibility, potentially, if we have it in the same bucket, and we could move it around if needed, we could do a budget adjustment as needed. But I don't want it to seem like at that time, like we're going to then take the money from housing to put it towards this, but...
It's a reallocation. It's okay.
Great.
We do those. I think it's a good idea to queue up decision-making and be able to look at it in its entirety, and we may need to do a budget adjustment at the time that you determine, you know exactly how you want to head forward, but that's fine.
Councilmember Noiva Camina.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. I'm in support of holding off and seeing how, how we stand it up, and also what shifts we start seeing overall in our communities with the new administration coming in throughout that first quarter, and seeing what unforeseen needs that our community may have before we make that definitive decision and say, let's, let's take a breath, let's wait, let's see what new needs arise.
Yeah, and I'm just going to add in, I couldn't agree more, and I think that we all agree that what we want to use our resources for in this discussion is as much direct help as we can get to the people who need it, and if that means, you know, direct financial resources or help in making decisions, i.e. legal or social workers, those are the things that we need to talk about. But we really need to stay focused on the outcome we're looking for, and that is, in fact, to stabilize housing. So, there's a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot of potential changes coming to us, and I appreciate my colleagues' understanding that this is, in fact, a very serious problem, and we need to make the best of it. So, Councilmember Kritzler.
Yeah, thank you so much. And I just want to state for the record, since I'm, I've been going back and forth a little on this, just trying to be creative in terms of making sure that we meet all our community's needs, that I think, I think overall, this is a really exciting budget. There's a lot of really amazing investments in here for our community, and, and I'm excited about this Housing Stability Fund, and I appreciate how we've kind of come to that through this process and look forward to developing that out as well. So, thank you to all the staff. Thank you to my colleagues, and looking forward to hopefully moving forward on this.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate this conversation, and you know what I did? Is I pulled up our council retreat notes from earlier this year, and public safety funding with a focus on alternative crisis response and community health program was the number one priority at the top of the list. So, I really appreciate the creative thinking around, now that we know that there's this, this pool. It is interesting to think about $1.4 million being saved in unfunded FTEs, then creating a couple FTEs. So, the FTE authorizations might look a little creative, but I think we've teed ourselves up for some really hefty conversations in, in the early part of 2021, or excuse me, 2025, and like as my other colleagues have said, the fact that we are here and talking about this part of the budget, you know, really is an indicator that this is a really great budget. So many things were baked in already, and it's been a great year of collaboration. The preliminary budget itself was very, very strong, and it's been a pleasure to continue to refine the details and queue up great work for 2025. There will be no rest next year, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. The only thing I would say is, when I asked the question about the salary savings, I did point out that this was a very unusual year, and that we don't typically add this many positions, and we don't plan this far ahead for that many positions. So, it was a rare...
I would not typically make this recommendation, so thank you for acknowledging.
Right. Appreciate that. So, are, is there, are there any other, let me ask this question first. Are, do we need the Thursday meeting? Yeah, thumbs down on a Thursday meeting. Okay, so I think we're getting very, very close for the...
She's ready. Go now.
Are there any other comments from councilmembers on the budget and as we move forward to the business meeting, where we will adopt the budget? Perfect. I would just like to say this. I always have immense gratitude and appreciation for Director Cochran and her staff, but I'm going to use this time to express my appreciation to the mayor. And, and the reason I say that is because, and I say this every time we, we get close to passing a budget, passing the budget is nothing as it compares to optimizing, managing, and implementing the budget. And that work, as many councilmembers have pointed out, is best done in a collaborative effort, and the mayor has shown over the years, and most recently, in a heightened way from my perspective, that she understands and appreciates the council's thought process and understands the values that we try to include in our decision-making. So, I, I'm excited about this budget because I think we have a good collaborative effort between the elected office, offices. So, thank you, Mayor Bernie. I'm not sure if you're still online, but hopefully someone will pass that on to you. And with that, I think I'll pass it back to Council President.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Fields. I appreciate your adept chairmanship on that. So, the next item on our, on our agenda is council talk time. I have a few items. I also see that the mayor did say in the chat, "I'm here." Thank you. So, so just to clarify for the listening public, we have decided that we will not have a meeting this Thursday, so that meeting will be canceled, and we will be voting on the budget on Tuesday, November 19th, and the meeting that is currently on our calendar for November 21st will also be canceled. For the council, a reminder, we'll be voting both on the budget on the 19th, as well as on the entire Redman 2050 Comprehensive Plan. So, pretty exciting stuff. Wanted to let the council know that on that day, we do plan to have a break time after all those votes to be able to celebrate especially all the work and years and years that went into 2050, but also hopefully we can toast all of our finance staff and other staff and everybody who's, who's worked so hard on the budget as well. One thing that I wanted to note about that meeting, because we were doing some agenda planning for this, hoping that we might be able to vote on both at the same time, is that in order to kind of make the timing work out, both items will be on the consent agenda. I will plan to poll those items so that we can vote on them, and everyone can comment on those, those items before we take the final votes. We decided to do that instead of putting it on new business and making it later in the night, since we looked into whether we could reorder the agenda to put new business earlier, and we're not able to. We might want to in the new year, look at changing our council rules, so that way we sometimes could just put our agenda out there. But in discussion, Council Vice President Forsyth and I thought that it'd be better to have, if we're planning to actually vote on items earlier in the night, instead of moving to amend the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, to just tell the public, yes, we are going to vote at them, on them earlier in the night, so please come then. And for the listening public, please come, share your comments on these before we vote on them, and then hopefully join us for, for some celebration as well during that meeting. One of the other things I wanted to just note for, for councilmembers in terms of some upcoming timing on things is that for committee chairs in the next couple of weeks, my understanding is that because we are canceling a few meetings through, in December, and because of kind of the schedule also with Thanksgiving, the couple of committees that we have left are going to be pretty busy. So, just wanted to empower all committee chairs, when you're setting your agendas, to put any items that aren't actual action items to read only, unless you feel like they really warrant a deep discussion, and to empower the directors to do that as well. So, that way, because I think we may have some, some pretty long lists of committee items and committee agendas in the next couple of weeks, and just wanted to let council know that, just so you can be prepared, but it's also partially so we can have weeks like Thanksgiving and some of the holidays off. I also wanted to note, just in terms of timing, that, that following up on last week's discussion around the right-of-way hopper item that Council Vice President Forsyth had put forward, we were able to connect with the mayor and Director Burt, and they are going to do a, like, redlined copy on the, with some suggestions on the proposed resolution, and hopefully we'll be seeing that in committee at Public Safety Human Services next week. We'll, I'm going to check in with Councilmember Salahuddin about that, unless he wants to just chime in right now. I'm not sure if that's, if he can let us know about that. If not, I'll keep going. Other thing I just wanted to flag, it's a little further out, is that February 18th, we won't be having a council meeting. That's a Tuesday, but we will have a special meeting. We won't have a council meeting here in chambers, but we'll have a special meeting with our legislators in Olympia. So, if you want to set your calendars early, I'll send also all these reminders via email to councilmembers, but did want to let people know so you can kind of plan in advance, and I know that Deidre is already working on booking hotels. For that evening, that'll be, following those days will be the AWC, or conference in Olympia, the city action days, so people can go to that as able. And then last thing I just wanted to share is that we apparently have confirmation that the Lake Washington School District Board is, is likely to be available in March or at the latest April to have a joint meeting with us. So, we're making... So, we're making progress on that. And I'm also working on nudging along on the Bellevue School District item as well. And those are all of my items. Are there any other items for council talk time? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thanks. Can you just remind me? I believe during our agenda setting, we talked about a 30-minute recess during the meeting to break after we vote for the budget and for 2050, to have a little celebration with the community that worked on those, but here in chambers, and have a 30-minute recess to celebrate.
Yeah. Sorry if that wasn't clear. I think that's what I was trying to say earlier, is after we take those votes, we then will take a recess. So, it'll be in the middle of our meeting that we'll be having that celebration, which is part of why we decided to put the, those items earlier in the meeting, so we could, because we will have, after that, we'll have several staff reports, other items of business, et cetera, to finish. But for those who wanted to come celebrate, wanted to have that earlier. Thanks. Any other items for council talk time? Seeing none? If there's nothing for good of the order, this meeting is adjourned.